You're missing something.
Certainly.
That's what I suggested for the board. We should just have it again. I didn't even get into the wood out policy.
So it's part of this, you know, helping with the behind the scenes research.
And then we had, we had a meeting, I think it came to one, and then after that meeting, we had questions that came up. Yeah, that was one of the things that stood up.
One of, one of the questions that I have or comments that Raj had made, I just wanted to touch base on. Raj, you were saying, and I won't bother to read the whole thing out, but you were saying that Facebook page is where you come to learn a lot of instances of things that happen in town. And so I guess, and this, you know, probably goes to all of you, not just Raj, but, you know, there, there always will be Facebook comments that are made within the town. And I'm not always popular on those. So I guess I'm looking for feedback from the board in terms of, is it possible for you to remind people that maybe they could CC me on comments so that I'm aware of them and I can help you better respond to them? Or, or are there other ways that you think that I should be more proactive in terms of trying to find out what, what some of these Facebook issues are?
Can I give back to the PEC board? That's one of those things, you know. I do like to.
Do you want to answer that question first?
No, I, yeah. So, there are many instances, you know, you were saying, so these are all confidential. I cannot disclose to you anything, even though this is a select vote. But eventually, you know, all the informations will be disseminated. People will know it. And people, they will come to us, they will ask us, oh, you did know that? So, I know that there are some of the sensitivities of the information, you may not tell us, but Board of Selectment, they will, if you say this is confidential, we are keeping it confidential. So, I think, you know, it could be a little more, you, you can screen the information, but at the same time, you know, we do need to know. We do need to know.
See, it's okay.
So I can, I can go back giving an example of a couple of things. One is the, our, one of the police officer, that incidents, everyone knows it. Entire town knows the incident. And another officer was disciplined. So that officer came to, came to me and he said, oh, you, you guys didn't know? So what, what do we say to him? What do we say to him? They are town employees. Board of Selectment, do they have right to know or not what happened to them or why? I know that it's a police, police thing.
Yep.
But it's a personal issue too.
Okay. So I think moving forward then, what I'm hearing you say is that you'd really like me to try to share as much as I can without going over that line that places the town, because, you know, I have to be mindful in terms of what we can say and what we can't say.
I agree totally. In fact, it does comes out of the doubt and the people just knows it. There are, at the end of the day, you know, everyone knows it. Everyone is asking us.
Rumors do fly.
Asking us. And I don't know what's the, you know, there are two or three different versions of this story came out. So we don't know. So it looks like, you know, we are, we look like idiots. That's what I'm saying.
Right. Thanks for sharing.
Well, just about PEC board.
PEC board. So this PEC board, I know that you wanted to do the PEC board. You did create the PEC board. Reorganized, we created that. But even, this has been like more than a year, year and a half. And even after the few complaints from the town residents also, the personnel of the job descriptions is not being done. So that, you know, so that, that looks like, you know, it's, is it the timing or we have to do the job description?
So the job descriptions have been reformatted along with all the other town non-union job descriptions. So that is done. Personnel board has them. Part of the delay in that was that when the PEC board did work to try to revamp the job descriptions and had gone to the personnel board before, there was some confusion in terms of the scope of work that was required in those two different job descriptions. And when that was raised to their attention, the job descriptions actually did go back to the PEC board for additional revision. And those have been revised and they are, they are in front of the Personnel Board now with the reformatted, recategorized information. So, you know, it's, we reorganized the PEC board last July. And, you know, this, I agree that that reorganization has not been as effective as I hoped. Part of the problem there, I would say, is that we're having difficulty retaining, you know, good, experienced people. And, you know, that's something that the Personnel Board will be looking at during this compensation study. So I'm hoping that we can move ahead with it being smoother. One of the remaining issues we have right now is the loss of our pay coordinator. She just resigned effective on Monday. So that's another thing, another challenge we're going to be facing.
I have comments on the PEC board, I can talk, I don't think that's, I don't think this meetings, you know, it's more than dealing with questions.
Do you have anything else on, any other questions, anything else on?
I didn't have any issues with the services of the board. Questions I asked were answered, so I'm good there.
The only comment I made was a few times it was, we didn't have the answers or we didn't have, we asked you questions, you weren't, you didn't have the answers. And I know you can't have quick answers for everything. But there's a few times, quite a few times that we didn't have the answers. So that's all, that's okay.
That was some feedback.
That's what I put down.
So again, this is for the point one, service and.
For one.
Support.
Yeah.
If I want, you know, I can add a couple, couple of more things.
Good.
So when, when it goes to the agenda items, I would like a little more of, you know, review the agenda items and give us the correct information. You know, even during the meetings, one of the things, you know, it looks like, you know, we have one open meeting violation. But you, well, you have that sheet, we have, we, everyone has the sheet, but you are referring to another open meeting, second election instead of this. The other one is, we could have been a little more careful than the town meeting, deadening stuff. So this is not enough one individual department or one individual person. This is the entire town. So the town, town look at us like a, either the Board of Selectment are inefficient or the, yes, town office is inefficient.
Right. I totally agree that the mistake made in the posting of the special town meeting warrant was an issue. And, you know, I apologize for that responsibility. Thank you. On the second category, which is budget preparation and administration, Chris, you made the comment, I feel like we're paying for a lot more services than in the past we're done in-house. Could you give me some clarification on that?
I can't, I can't come up with the, I can recall, I don't know, the last five meetings we've had CMRPC doing things for us, the survey, we were going to hire a company to do the survey. I mean, it just seems like the planning board, all these boards that were paying, not the planning board, but the other two, the ZBA, these are all things that, I mean, we have to lower taxes, not just the, the budget's just getting bigger and bigger every year and we're spending too much. And I think some of the stuff is, I mean, I probably have, in the last month, 15 emails easily on occasions that you say town council was contacted. I don't recall getting town council involved in every issue we had in town in the past. So that's, I mean, that's a few, I can't think of any exact, but I mean, that's a sum of them right now.
Yep. No, but I, I have to say there have been a lot of items that have required town council review and requested by the board.
I don't disagree. I don't disagree with that, but I mean, there are a lot more than I think, you know, just contacting, where I think the town administrator should be answering some of those questions.
Raj, you were saying in your comment that there were no new grants to the town. Our town almost lost the only one it received for a $0.95 million sidewalk project. I'm concerned about that one because since, since I took the job, we've had a number of grants come in. We've got the $145,000 for the Green Community. We have $10,000 for pavement management, $15,000 for housing production plan, $20,000 for the complete streets planning, $190,000 for the two or three sidewalk project. And that's above and beyond the annual grants that all the departments actively continue to work on. So I'm not sure what you meant by your statement.
What I meant is, you know, I think, you know, we could do better, more. And also what I meant by the $9.5 million grant is that one of the sidewalks improvement project, just before you came on board. But that's a lot of money. It could have been, we could have been easily lost.
I agree. And I think it was Nancy was your mistake.
It was Nancy was the one saved it.
Yeah.
So, you know, this is a huge money. I'm not sure how you were, you missed it, or you overlooked it. That's, that's my point. It's not like we lost it.
That wasn't even, I wasn't even here at the time.
I know.
It was.
No, after you took off my statement.
But Nancy was finishing the project when I came on board. It was done. I don't, I disagree with that statement that I overlooked something. That project was being completed successfully.
Is it PEC?
I think, I think you'll have the paperwork with you, interview the whole board on what was going on during that scenario.
Okay. I can just add that to the, I asked the town administrator for me to do my review. I asked her a self review. I asked her to answer, not the paperwork she gives us, more answer these questions. And under budget preparation, the answer from the town administrator was working with an excellent team of finance staff. That was, that was just a self review. I, I, that doesn't help me at all review. I would like to hear what you thought. Like, I guess those, those grants could have been, you know, some of the things you told me. You know, I know, I knew some, but you could have said, you know, this is some of the things we're doing to help, you know, lead the budget, grants and things. But a statement, working with an excellent team of finance staff, I don't.
That was the, that was the second self-evaluation you asked me to give.
That was the one that answers these questions. The other ones kind of don't answer these 15 or 10 questions. And that's what I asked. It was helpful in some cases, but not in all of them.
I mean, on the, the budget, because I, I did have some questions. I think, like, I get concerned, like, it takes me a little while to process numbers, but when, especially when Pat's asking a question, I feel that if you had your hands wrapped better around the budget, then the answers might be quicker coming to us. Sometimes it takes a little bit to go back. And I think you've done okay with it, but it's trying to get down to the nitty gritty. And maybe something that would help all of us is, I would suggest, maybe like a quarterly update on what happened that quarter, kind of as a recap. So when we're looking at things, that can help us bring it back to the, to the bottom line.
Okay. Do you look at the monthly expenditure reports that we have that tie in and here's?
I do.
Okay.
Part of the issue is, like, for me, I, I look at quarters. So trying to, you know, to pull that, I try and, and look at the, the budget ones. I, I do a lot of it before we go into our regular meetings. But I think what I have a little bit of concern is if, and Pat is the number guy, I'm not picking on him, but he is the number guy. And when he asks a question, I was like, wow, that's, that's a really good question. And my brain doesn't work that way. But I get just a little bit more concerned if you don't have the details.
So I think what I'm hearing you say is that you want, that during the year, it'd be helpful to have a quarterly recap.
Yeah.
Of where the budget stands with perhaps, I, I agree that some of those expenditure reports are hard to read.
Right.
And don't always give detail in terms of type of issues that pop up with those expenditures.
Right.
So that, that's really helpful. About kind of that issue.
And I know Leslie does the, I asked her to start doing the executive summary on the, just because I don't need to look at 12 line, 12 pages of budget. I just want to know if there's any issues. Maybe expand, as part of that, an expanded, we can work with Leslie on, quarterly, hey, this is the big picture type stuff, not just the, not just the problem areas, which is what I was interested in, but hey, this is what we're doing good, this is where we're, where we're, the budget is, stuff's coming in under budget.
And I had an issue with the not getting enough information from the finance committee or getting it too late for town meeting. I've said, I says a lot of times in the past, we've always, you know, even this time, we get the, we always put the articles on before.
We're still waiting for their vote on the DPW.
Yeah, I know. And so we need to communicate better with them way before, I know it's not all your fault.
I think if you looked at the chain of emails between my office and the finance committee and see that the chair has received all the information they needed in a very timely fashion.
And just, that's one of my petties.
No, I agree.
We're always, we're right before town meeting to make the decision.
I agree.
And it seems like they get the information, they don't give it to us the day of the town meeting, something like that. It's just not fair to the board, because we have to put this forward to the town.
Nina, maybe going forward is once the town meeting is set, you know, the date, because we do set that pretty standard, maybe we work into it backwards to say, okay, the capital expenses are going to be done or the finance committee's meeting here. And then set a date at the same time to have that joint meeting. And if it's on everyone's, I know for me, if it's on my calendar earlier, I have a better chance of getting there. So maybe, and maybe we have to push back when the capital expenses have to be due by.
Well, the capital requests come in in September.
Right. But we're, we're still not sure, like, on the DPW track.
On the track, we don't, on the track, there's two issues. We want to know how they voted on. We, we were meeting one time before the, we meet before the.
We do. We, we have the joint meeting with the finance committee, maybe sooner.
Yes. I think it's too, I think it's too close to the town meeting.
So what we need to do.
Okay, so move it up.
But we need to ask the finance committee and the capital investment board to, to start their budget process earlier. Now, I know that, that's tough because, you know, they're waiting for the budget to be developed, but what they can do is the capital, they, they don't start the capital investment meetings until they have a budget nailed down, and then they start looking at all that stuff. They might, they may have had the information in September, but they meet and discuss all that stuff once they have the budget in hand, which you, that's locked in, you have to wait till you get the cherry sheet before you can develop, that develop your budget. So what we have to do is we have to ask the CIB to start on the capital stuff sooner before, and they'll be happy we're asking them to have more meetings, I'm sure. But if, if they could start on the capital stuff before they get the budget, get that out of the way, so that, and then they'll get some pushback because they're going to say, we want to see the overall budget. I understand that, but there's some preliminary stuff and they can gather the data and meet with the department heads. And I mean, they go kick the tires and say, does this really need to be replaced? That can all be done before the budget process starts.
Capital stuff that we turn, or see yet to depart plans.
But they're, as far as what they're going to approve, having been on that board, I think they're going to want to see the overall budget in conjunction with what they're going to approve out of the capital investment or funds. And, but they can certainly start that, the CIB process earlier. They might not be able to take the vote, but once, it'll move up the vote if they take it and they'll, will end up getting it in more timely fashion.
So that's what my point was. I've talked about that for years.
We may decide not to vote on the act. I know we can remove it anytime, but I don't think it shows that we're not appropriated or.
I agree on this side of it.
I will share that with them. Um, the next category is management skills. And Shabon, you, in your comment, you had said, there's an impression of lack of teamwork within the departments. Employees need to be listened to and given time to improve skills and needs looking for. And I feel the need to get better clarification on this. We have our monthly staff meetings, which is very much a team oriented process where we have opportunity to talk about issues or concerns that are going on. Those are always discussed at the team level. So are you getting feedback from people? And I don't want names.
Yeah.
I don't need names. But I feel I need, I need information in terms of the types of issues or frequency. So are these staff meetings not satisfying the needs of the department heads?
Right. I'm hearing, and I've been approached that they don't feel that they really have a voice and they would, they would like to be heard.
Did you get feedback in terms of ways that they thought that would help?
Some of them said, like, it's such a set agenda that I know sometimes in different management things that I've done, I've, and I know, maybe you do, because I have not asked this question, do you ask them for any items that they want on the agenda?
Around people.
Okay. Because there's some, from what I'm hearing is they don't either have enough time to give their thoughts, because it's a pretty well full GM packed agenda, or they're, they're just not getting listened to. Like, they'll say it, but it's not getting processed. And that they don't hear a voice. And I have to say, in any type of business, that's not an unusual comment to have from different people. But it's a frustration. And if we could figure out either ways for it to work on both sides better, I think everybody would be better off.
All right. Thank you.
Yeah. So on my thing, I have the lobby expectations. A small office like the town of Spores, you have to be a very people person. So I think there's a lot of intimacy in there that shouldn't be there between the people in the, in the offices. And I, I just think that you need more one-on-one with each individual person when you meet with them. Maybe there's an issue that they don't want to talk in public, they're afraid to talk in front of somebody else or something. So I think that's important. And I, I think that's my number one issue I have with you is handling people in the office. It's not just some people. It's, I think that would make your biggest improvement, if we could do that and find a way to communicate better with people. And I told you, you and I have talked about this a lot.
I think, you know, I guess I have to admit to being surprised when I hear, you know, that people feel that, that I'm not responsive. I mean, when I've spoken to other department heads, they express to me that they feel that I'm very responsive. So I can imagine who, who the individuals were that made these comments. So I think what I need to do then is to just be, perhaps approach those individuals with a different style, because it's obviously not working for them.
Management everybody's different, you know, obviously. And like I said, it's such a small group there, there's no reason why everybody should not be, there's absolutely no reason.
Thank you.
My only comment on that was that overall, I gave the needs expectation, a little stoic, a people person thinks, similar comment to John's. I had a, use a term I know, a militaristic type regimented type leader is, is, I don't personally have a problem with, but some people need to, the more hands-on, kumbaya, shake their hand, pat them on the back type leadership style. And I'm not very good at that myself.
Good air for people.
Thank you.
I think I feel the same thing.
Nina, can I just add one thing to that? I know in my line of work, sometimes I'm so focused, and I have been told this more than once, somebody writes me an email and it's a half, you know, half a page, and I just answer it back with the direct answer. That gets me in trouble because they want more than just the, yeah, more love and more direct. But I'm so focused on getting the answer and getting on to the next thing that I have to step back and say, okay, this is how this one person reacts. And it's taken me a long time to change that in my management style with different people because I'm just thinking, I got to get this done and move on to the next thing. Just a little.
So do you think, I mean, is, is that just in email correspondence or in person as well?
I think, yeah, for me, it's in person. I would say both ways, just a little hint that may or may not.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah.
In my comment, you know, I did put it like, you know, our town is very small, building finance, tax, and the town clerk. So it is a very small office and very small staff. And I don't see a, you know, all the offices are united or something. And also there is some of the offices, the town admin office and that particular offices, I can see a lot of tension. I don't know how you're going to relieve the tension. It's, it could be you or it could be them causing the tension. There will be some friction going on. So that has to, you know, reduce our tensions. I do know that there is tension going on.
I agree.
Not on all the departments. Not on all the departments. There are few departments.
Yeah, I agree.
I do have a comment on that question, just in regards to where this meeting is tonight. I just want the public to know that this was set by the town administrator. I sent an email out to the chairman and the town administrators wanting, saying, it should be at town hall, you know, saying, and right now, there's people up in the lobby talking, we should have been involved in this time. I don't mind having a meeting here, but I don't think it should have been done like this. It should have been at town hall when we have all our meetings. There's no reason to. This was scheduled, but I think I have the agenda here. And really, the agenda writer says, uh, main conference room. I don't know if this is the main conference room. I thought this was a training room. The conference room, when I talked to you, you said there was a conference room. So I don't know. I just, I just want the public to know, this is, this was not set, I don't believe, by the word of the chairman. This is a request by you.
Set by the chairman.
The chairman did, did say yes. And then in regards to your, your comment on the management skills, the answer to me was working on various personal issues with the department. Again, I, I would like personally, I mean, I know a lot of you folk, I'd like more information from you in regards to these questions, to have the review.
And just in self-defense, I did provide a lot more detail on this subject matter in the first self-evaluation that I sent out.
Yeah, in general, you know, but that's more, that doesn't answer the question. It's just the general, your performance.
Under human resource management, John asked the question, if, if there's somebody on the staff who is having a problem with me or has a problem with any action I've taken, disciplinary action or whatever, that I've taken with them, who is that individual supposed to go to? And just for the record, personnel policy calls that the employee has the right to appeal to the personnel board. That's within the personnel policy. I just wanted to put that. Um, the other one was Raj had said, why were cameras installed in the hallway without selecting approval? And I just wanted to respond to that by saying that the cameras were installed to improve the safety of the building. We've been having issues with doors not being locked. And Chris, Nancy and I met to discuss different ways that we could improve the security of the building. And cameras seem to be the cheapest, most prospective way to move that forward. The cameras have been out there for quite a while now. Nancy has sole access to the cameras. And every time we find the building is left unlocked, she's able to determine who it is, she contacts a person, and the person says, okay, yeah, I'm sorry, I forgot. So it's been improving the situation for not finding the building to be unlocked the way it was before. I think it's important that it's worked out that Chris did bring, you know, this, informed the board that the fact that these cameras were going in at one of our selectance meetings. And, you know, the board did not raise objection at this at the time that it was discussed. So I.
I think it was agreed that, that I worked with in regards to that at that meeting.
Right. I mean, Chris, Chris worked with Nancy to get the installer, so we solved the installation. It's not as though it was something that was just put up without any consideration.
I think the question was the cost. And we wanted new locks and everything, which we still have, we know we had an issue with one of the locks, but the cost would have been 10 times the amount if we moved the locks, changing locks. So that's what that brought. But I, I know there's, there's been some questions about the cameras, but, you know, every building you work in today has cameras. And that, I think it's a great security for the employees. I think it's huge. Someone comes in that building, causes trouble, these cameras. Someone comes in that building, causes trouble, these cameras are gonna record them, it's gonna, it's, the people are gonna think twice if they come in there.
I agree totally, cameras are good, cameras are there everywhere, but at the same time, it looks to some of the town employees, it was targeted or it was placed in such a way only in the first floor, level one. How come don't we need a camera on the top floor?
The only thing I can say to that, sure, you can put them upstairs, but no one's getting in that building without being recorded. And if he goes up to the second floor, she goes up to the second floor, she's been recorded on the first floor. I think that's all that's real necessary, just like at some of your works, you might have entrance door cameras, but not every hallway in the building. So I don't see that to be.
To respond to the comments on the doors are unlocked, I was wondering, you know, the police, do they check during the night leave sits?
Only, only if we have problems locking the door. For example, the other, this past weekend, we had troubles with the door locking and so I had to call the police department and ask them to check the building. Then once the door was able to be locked, I called them back and said we're set, so.
But I, I'm sure the maker advised, they look over to it. I mean, I don't, I can't imagine they do that with all the town buildings.
To go back to the cameras, I don't think I was at that meeting, but I, I do think that, I know when we have installed cameras, that people get right on the defense. It's, and it's wired, why is it in this part of the building and not the others? Because Chris, to go back to if somebody enters, they're on the camera, but if somebody walks in and gives Nancy trouble, we don't have a camera there to record it. But I understand cost and everything, but I think it's something that people's nature is, at least in our line of work, is always, well, why are they watching me during the day? They don't see it and I don't know how you got the word out to the staff.
Yes, we discussed it at the staff meeting.
Okay.
None of the, none of the, so if someone went into Nancy's office and gave her a run at time, they, all we're getting is that person entering the building because none of the offices are recorded. To tell you the truth, I suggested that the office that takes money should actually have a camera in that office.
Right.
But I think all the halls are covered, so if there's any issue, at least you call the person.
I think, you know, if you put the camera, we should put it here, but that's what it is, right?
I would not, I would.
If we afford it, that'd be great.
I personally wouldn't expect it to be on employees.
No, not on employees.
So that's.
Not on the floors. Just to say, you know, hey, we covered this floor and that we are covering this floor.
We can add on to that system.
Sure, you can, yeah.
And just one other point, the cameras aren't being watched all day. The only time that the data on the cameras is called up is if there's an issue where the door was left unlocked or somebody had a question about something. So no one's watching people as they're working during the day.
But the feeling is?
But they were explained that, I can understand that they still might have concerns, but this was all discussed at the staff meeting.
And all I'm saying, this human nature is they go to that side and that that's where some of the other, if you're already feeling stressed or whatever about the position, just something to be considered.
This is, again, I think the town administrator can handle this, but I mean, this is no different than a town email, phones, everything that the town owns can be used. Emails can be used if there's an issue, so people, I'm sure our personal bylaw, I don't know, I'm sure, like talk about that.
Silent government.
Yeah, but I mean, but it's understood that all the emails is towns, all the cameras are town recordings, all, you know, anything that happens.
Protection of town.
I totally agree, if it is, if it is, you know, unbiased, if it is everywhere, then it's fine. It seems like, you know, it's one place, so that's where the issue comes. If it is first floor, second floor, everywhere, or whatever the places, you know, it's fine. It looks like, that's our human nature again.
In the big picture, I've had limited money.
I know, I know, I totally agree. I'm not denying it, I'm not denying it, because there's some money, but again, you know, people think, you know, uncomfortable and am I targeted? Why not there? Why only here?
Going back to my comment, I, I would like to say that I think if someone has an issue with you, they should be able to come to the board's side. I mean, I think we are your bosses, so I don't know, is that a bylaw?
It's in the bylaw.
They are.
Can I bring something up to go with that? You are part of the personnel committee. But you go to.
Your point. I go to the meetings as needed, but I'm not part of the committee.
But you are appointing authority.
No, I'm not, the board selection is the appointing authority on personnel.
So you only go to those meetings when you're invited?
When there's issues, I mean, for example, for review of job descriptions, change of policy, you kind of, yeah.
So if somebody went to them with a problem, they in turn can come to us because you report to the selectmen?
They would, the personnel board would determine what the appropriate action would be. There's, say, say I disciplined an employee, yeah, say I disciplined an employee and they were not happy with that discipline.
Yeah.
They have the ability to appeal that to the personnel board. And so if the personnel board ruled that the discipline that I issued was improper, then certainly that, you know, you as my supervisors would be informed of that.
So if some, if an employee comes to us with concerns and comments, are you saying that is, see, I, I think they should be able to do that. We live in the town, we're out and if somebody is having a question, not just with you, but within any department, I'm assuming that if there's a department problem, then they would go to you as well or the by, personnel board. But I'm thinking that, yes, we're your appointing board, then those kind of questions should be allowed to come to us.
I'm not saying that an employee doesn't have the ability to speak to the board, but I would ask those that you provide me the courtesy of making sure that they'll come to speak to me about it first.
Right, yeah.
Because if I don't, if I'm not aware of it, that's not fair to them or to me.
Okay.
The next category is media provisions. Chris, in one of your comments, you had said that you'd like to see town administrator or community events at other town board meetings. So I, on average, I attend about three meetings a week for the various different boards or committees. So first, first part of this is, which boards or committees do you feel I should attend and not?
No, I don't, I don't think I have any in general. I think you should go, go to different board committee meetings just to see if they need anything from you. I mean, I'm not saying one certain one, but just in general.
Okay, so I, I have frequent communication with the chairs of all the different boards and committees and they know that if they feel they need me to attend their meetings, all they have to do is ask and I'm there. Is that not adequate?
No, I, I think you should, you should go to one of them, even though, just to see what they're doing. So if we have a question as the board, what's going on with a certain committee, you can answer it without just kind of looking at the minutes.
How many, so for those, what do you feel is a good number of meetings per week that I should be aiming for?
I don't know that answer. I think I'd leave that to you.
Obviously, I think, you know, there are, there are times of the year where we are inundated with meetings and especially this time of year, many for budget season, et cetera. Is it still acceptable for those times when they just don't have the ability to connect with those other departments that are still work through the chair to share information?
Yeah, I would say if during budget time, I would expect you to, you know, do it at that time. But some of those you might have to go to because if they're asking for money, you know, you're just getting it from the minutes off from the chairman, you know, what happened at the meeting when they asked for this money? Is it, is it, was it a committee vote that said we want some certain amount of money?
Also, you mentioned community events. You know, I, I do attend community events when I'm able to, Memorial Day, shortest parade, number of things, rail trail celebrations, et cetera, gone to your retirement parties. What is it that you were hoping that I would do?
I just, I mean, I know you mix with a few memorial day, I mean, but you're not really, you own the crowd. And may, I mean, maybe events that you don't go with the town administrator so people can get to know you if they want to, you know.
So more formal participation at those events?
Yeah, well, like, well, the groundbreaking, I mean, you were there, but, I mean, I think you could have, you could have a part of it too.
And maybe something that'll help you with that too is if you are at an event, who's ever putting on the event, make sure that they know you're there and that way introducing, because I have heard from different town residents and they're not sure, they, they've seen you, but they're not really sure unless they're watching TV and, you know, watching one of our programs or something. So that might be a way that could help you.
Thank you. There was, I can't, I can't find it here, but there was once, one of the comments was that we weren't getting enough coverage from the, the press.
That was me.
Okay.
Social media. I know it's not your fault, the item, they do a little bit, but we had, we had nothing in the telegram. I mean, every other town is covered so much, every meeting, I read, I read paper every day, so I, every government is covered and I know never gonna happen.
It will never happen because what's, well, it's considered, it's our territory. And they, they produce that, I just have all those papers all over the country and it's not on their list of towns to cover. They call, they ask us, they call up the clinic to me and the jan, say, hey, what have you got?
It's a shame, but like I said, I read, everything, every, it's covered.
All the other towns.
Everything, everything, that's why you read more, we don't get any.
We actually have sent them press releases that I have.
They forwarded us.
And I, and I can, I mean, I can't blame Ramona for this one because this has been, as long as I've been on the board, 15 years, we've asked that same question. We have over those years, when it raises to the T and G's, you know, it should be a story if it was in there, but we've asked that same question for many years. We've actually called the telegram because that, and the, as it was said, they would refer right back to the banner on the other one. I don't know how it can be fixed, it hasn't been, it's only getting worse now.
I'm just saying we need a better presence of social media, not just that. Rest of social media, I don't, I don't do it, but I'm sure the rest of the towns.
Now, I do have one more thing to add on, maybe that's not you, but maybe you could talk to the computer person, IT. So we should have had some information on the town website regarding our groundbreaking. There is no information, no news except the item, they did publish one article and also that, that's a part of the groundbreaking was a part of another article. So there is no information and also, you know, maybe we could have an email, we do have a list of email.
Actually did send a list there. I should.
We should have that, but I think, you know, I heard nobody received that email. And also.
Could have done another one perhaps.
Yeah, no, no information on the town website.
There was, I mean, it's not your problem, we need to treat that problem because there was nothing on the town website about the groundbreaking at all.
Well, one of the, one of the things that's going to happen with the change in the IT vendors, that different boards, departments, committees, offices will now be posting their own information. So this, I think, I actually think you'll find an improvement in, in terms of the frequency and the type of information that's going on there.
And also, you know, there is, there are, it's not your thing, but you could have looked at it or you could have said something to them. The, in the, in the calendar, town calendar, the meeting is posted, whereas the agenda is not there. So people has to go to the agenda, to the particular, say suppose Board of Selectment. So the Board of Selectment agenda, it's there, but not that agenda document idea, whereas they have to go to that other website on the Board of Selectment agenda page, they have to, there the agenda is posted. It's based, it's.
Are you talking about the calendar?
Calendar, you can see it. Calendar, oh, I'm sorry, calendar, sometimes you don't see the agenda, whereas in the Board of Selectment page, that page, there, there is an agenda.
We actually had a glitch in the software that happened with Nancy about a couple months ago that the IT director had to repair.
Yeah, so.
All right, and then goal setting and achievement was the other category and almost each of you said that, you know, well, everyone except Pat said that the goals had not been achieved. And I do have some concern about this because we did not set our goals until last July. So the year for completing the goals will be June 30th. And as far as I see it, and I've given you updates, you know, several times in terms of where we stand on our goals, we're tracking well for the goals, not only for my goals myself, but for the work I'm doing on helping you with your goals, you know, the economic development, town communication, the R and P for TIP and DRIVE. So I, I'm a tad disappointed that you're, you're already reporting on the status of goals, you're saying they're not completed, but we, the year's not up yet and I think we're tracking well each of those items.
Somewhere we lost something because I did put acceptable on that. You, I did not state that.
You did, you did, you said, find your work if this will goes positive, right, acceptable. Okay, so I know that you said have, but I do think that you've stayed on pocket with them and I think you've done work bringing in with the TIP program and everything, so. The next category is dealing with uncertainty and change and, you know, several of you mentioned the, the mistake of this special town meeting posting and absolutely that was a mistake, which I take responsibility for. But Raj, you made a comment that you would have handled things in a very efficient way. There was no need to wait until last minute. I'm not sure we meant by that.
Regarding the town meeting. So we had, we did talk about the, this is one of those things, you know, senior, it's a very important special town meeting. You know it, we have been talking it for months and months and months. So this should have been, posting the warrant should have been done, you know, a long time before. And, you know, we dragged it to the last minute. And then, and I, I do understand that you, on that day, you know, it gets sick. I, I do that, but the problem is, you know, if it is one individual department or one person, we can go talk to them, okay? This problem is solved. Now people are up on the arms and they are saying, you know, oh, there is some conspiracy going on, that's why they put the town, town election first, town meeting on the other side. So it looks to, again, you know, I have to say that, you know, what, what, why the selectmen did not look at it, why the town administrator did not work on it, to put this just a simple warrant, you know?
So we have a set schedule that we do for every warrant process and Nancy has the dates by which the warrant has to be posted and she backtracks on that to determine the date that the selectmen have to meet. Do you think it would be better if we push that more forward?
One week before at least, you know, maybe a week.
Or one, might need to be more than a week to meet the next meeting.
Should be a week before.
Or tracking, you know, better tracking.
Could you add a comment on that?
Sure.
When we did the schedule for town meeting, one of the things we've always done, I did this with Leon, is that we always meet the last Wednesday in April or the last Wednesday in September. So we have a full two or three weeks to go over the warrant and it gives us an extra week's cushion in case there's any last minute items. Last time we posted the May warrant, and I understand people have lives, but we missed that Wednesday and we had to push it off to the following Monday.
Because we didn't have a form.
We didn't have a form, but, and, and I get, and I understand, but we really need that extra week.
I totally agree, but if we missed it Wednesday, we could have had the meeting on, even, you know, if you'd have called me on Saturday, I would have been there just signing the warrant.
I'm just saying that we.
I'm just saying, you know.
But it has to be posted.
That's why we, we've always thought it up, we've always given us that week.
I totally agree, but it's, it should have been avoided. I totally agree, but it's, it should have been avoided, considering the, you know, importance of this meeting, town meeting, you know. We, we talked several times.
Well, perhaps when we have our goals session, you know, we can, we can work on kind of reframing the process and date deadlines to deliver goals for that process. So that.
No, mistake happens, but this should have been avoided.
Oh, absolutely.
It should have been, should have been avoided.
I agree.
It's the entire town.
I take full responsibility.
And also, you know, entire town was, if it is a project which has no controversy, then it's fine. But it's.
Risk management, category nine. John and Chris, you know, both commented that this all gets passed on to Nancy. And I will agree 100%, it does get passed on to Nancy. It's within her job description that the risk management, work with the insurance companies, et cetera, is municipal assistance duties. And, you know, Chris made the comment that every time we talk about the issue, I refer the question to Nancy. And I do, because Nancy's up to speed on working standards in terms of the different loss control programs or what have you. And Nancy agreed to chair the new safety committee, loss control committee that we have, and she's doing a great job. And when I refer things to Nancy, it's because I'm doing that, because I'd like to have her an opportunity to show that she's being really successful in meeting that requirement in her job description. I'm not trying to pass off the responsibility that, you know, that I should be looking at. I, I want people to recognize that Nancy always has and will always continue to do a great job in the area of loss control and insurance partnership in town.
I would suggest we just take that off the, for the future.
I think that's valid, yeah. And the, the last one is professional development. And there were, there were comments below expectations or a lack of interest. And again, this, this is one that, that concerns me, because I'm a member of the Managers' Association, I'm a member of the Small Town Administrators' Association, I'm an MPA, I'm NAPO, the procurement agency, I'm, I'm a member of a local regional managers group, and I attend two or more professional development sessions every month. And I, I'm not sure why that is being perceived as being not meeting expectations.
I can start. I was a little bit disappointed when the adult used marijuana. So I have, I, I was at the MMA conference. There are certain town administrators, there are, they are very active, and they do know that they are involved in that need things. And they're taking up the graft and they drafted the bylaw, and they did, passed the bylaw, you know. But when the, the adult use marijuana thing came in, and it looks to me like, you know, you have no knowledge of it. And also, there was a meeting, one in MMA conference, and also there is one in Worcester State College. There are meetings, and also you could have easily got the information from our town council. They are the cannabis control commissioners. But I felt like, you know, either we, you don't want to know it, to busy, or, that was a little bit, you know, that's one of those things, you know, when it comes to the can, marijuana, adult use marijuana. I think, you know, it's very important for our town. We need to know. People are thinking, when it comes to the, this, they think, oh, we are banning, banning the use of the marijuana. And there are many other things goes with this, is the stores, the growers, the infusions, there are many other things. So I thought, you know, maybe you, you should have more knowledge than us on that subject. And it came to the one of the Board of Selectmen meeting, and I felt like, you know, you didn't have any clue on that, or you didn't have much knowledge to talk about that. So perhaps, you know, you could have gone to one of those meetings.
Actually, did go to one of those meetings. I went to the one that was held in Shirley, put on by the Campus Control Commission. And I do get regular emails from the MMA and from other resources, CMR PC, Public News Page. So I have that information. I'm sorry if you perceive that I'm not aware of the information.
That's how I felt, on that day.
I think we, I think we were late. I think we should have started that process earlier, like other towns did. Where, where starting it probably later than most towns.
Right. Well, what was on the last town meeting warrant?
That, I think that, that should have been, it should, you should, I, you could have told us that we should look at more things, we should look at putting a bylaw moratorium, we should put these things on. So we could have talked to everything, like, like other, most towns, I think, Doyleston is doing it right now, they're pulling three out of them. We just put the one in the townspeople's database. We didn't have a lot of information.
Okay.
I think we could have started earlier.
So you're looking for more proactive identification options?
Yeah, we got, definitely. And I think that we're moving forward now as a, as a group, we have to see, you know, what town meetings is.
It's one of those situations, you know, very divided. A lot of people, you know, goes this side and the other side.
As we saw at town meeting.
So much, so much controversy. And also, when it goes to this particular adult use marijuana, there should be a lot of education we needed. So those things are, even during the last town meeting, I don't think so people know it. So we are not saying, you know, not smoking marijuana, banning, banning the smoking of marijuana in our town, whereas we are saying, you know, we need to have the bylaws, we, or be, do we need the stores? Those things people need to be educated.
I'm actually doing, as you know, I've been doing video sessions explaining the town meeting warrant before each town meeting. This one, for the spring town meeting, I'll be taping with various different department heads on Thursday. And so obviously, there'll be a lot of discussion about the marijuana moratorium for that more critical opportunity for us to get public education out there.
One of the things, I just want to comment on the, I had, one of the things I'm more concerned about is taking, you know, meetings that affect the town, not professional development. And I know there's, there was an agenda, so, you know, your next appointment, your next job, or something that's important, but it's not going to affect the town. That's, I would see more meetings, local meetings than statewide meetings. I, I would, I would be more interested in you attending those than something in Boston that's, a lot of things are not, not going to affect the town.
I, I have to say that I'm very careful in terms of choosing the sessions that I do go to for that very reason. I'm not going to waste my time going to sessions that have nothing to do with the town, West Doyleston. And so, you know, the ones that I do attend, they're pertinent to what we're dealing with at the time, or they're an ongoing issue that we need to be aware of. So I feel I do make that judgment call in determining which meetings to go to. And I can show you the list of sessions that I've been to over the past year, if you'd like, and I can give you details as to what the session was about. But I, I do feel I do a good job in making that judgment call. What I just passed around was a review. One of the things I found lacking in the performance evaluation was any list of accomplishments that have actually taken place this year. And I thought this would be a good opportunity for us to go over those. Some, you know, some of these I had sole responsibility for, but many was a team effort. And as I mentioned before, a lot of the work that we do within Town Hall is a team effort. But I did want to recognize these accomplishments that we've been successful with in the past year. Early, early accomplishment was the hiring of the director, DPW Director, Wex Jackson. I think he was an excellent addition to the force, and he's proving to be very effective and valuable to the DPW. Hiring outside auditor through an RFP process to replace the firm that had been longstanding. I think the finance team and I agree that this provided a better opportunity for increased scrutiny in, and transparency within a review of our documents, and we found it to be very effective. Recruitment and appointment of younger residents to be appointed to different positions that built some growth capacity within our different boards and committees. And I think it's, it's been great to see some of our young people stepping up to the plate and wanting to be part of our volunteer government. I developed a special projects internship agreement with Assumption College, and we've had some great students come through in that process. It's different from a full internship, because it's not the entire term. There'll be students who volunteer to help us with unique, specific, limited time projects, and to, to the assistance of the different departments. We achieved the green community status. This is something that I asked the town to consider. We went through that complication, the application process, and we were able to achieve the green community status, and we did receive a $145,000 designation grant. I also proposed, and we did apply for a community compact status. We received a $10,000 grant, and a $15,000 grant for various assistance to meet our best practice areas that we had identified. For the Curtis Manufacturing Tiff, according to Peter Milano from Mass Office Business Development, it was one of the fastest, most efficient Tiff processes he has seen, and he is certainly willing to answer any questions aboard the head above that. We also had the coordination of the agreement with the town, Stephen Keditchian, and the First Congregational Church for temporary COA space. And by finding a way to make that work, we now have the expansion of 127 Hartwell, which will result in $4.2 million of additional tax levy, starting at $20,000. Very proud of that. I've developed a volunteer grant writer position to work with the different departments to research funding and prepare grant applications. The, the grant writer, Theo Jordan, is now working with friends of the senior center to put together letters of interest to send out to different foundations for funding for the senior center. We are establishing a schedule for closing out or reducing support of the financial consultant for the town accountant's office. Our town accountant has, on a, through a very steep learning curve, and she's doing a great job. And we're now able to kind of reduce the reliance on that financial consultant. So I see that's been a big benefit to town. We did the in-house development of all the non-union job descriptions that contain standard formatting, and they aligned with the grading tool that the, I asked, and the person on board agreed to adopt. And we retained our double A++ bond rating. We went through that recent review that was required with the town hall and the police station borrowing, and that was a huge accomplishment. Definitely a team effort. In terms of the status of my goals, the first goal was the overhaul of the non-union job descriptions. Those have all been completed, and they're currently before the personal board liaison for review, before going to the full board for review and vote. And I met with the personal board on April 10th to define what their review process should be, so that's well, close to completion. The five-year revenue expenditure projection, I started working with one of the assumption students on this. Unfortunately, she had to pull out, go back to China. But I continued to pull the reports from DOR and working on related assumptions, and hoping that that draft analysis will be reviewed by the finance team at our next meeting. Developed the financial, excuse me, facilities manager position. This is something that supporters of us have been asking to do. The school committee and the library board both agreed it was needed. School committee agreed to pay 50% of the cost when I met them. So I've been working with school staff and library director to develop the job description and the budget. Money was inserted into the FY '19 budget for that position. And the board has since asked that we look into outsourcing the position rather than the employee-based program. But I feel I met my requirements under that particular goal. Comprehensive plan update. Committee has prepared the four draft chapters and received public feedback on those. We're now working on the next five chapters. We're planning a second public forum for the summer, and the committee will then start to work with stakeholder groups to evaluate the drafted goals for potential issues of conflict or prioritization. And then the updating to the financial policies and procedures. We've created 10 new draft policies that will be, be requesting that we add to our existing lineup. Those will be submitted to the finance committee by the end of the month for their review, before I bring them to the board for your acceptance. So I think that I've done a good job in meeting my goals and objectives for the year. Things that I think we need to improve on and change moving forward. One of the consistent themes that was, became out bottom clear in the performance evaluation is that there needs to be some improvement in communication at all levels. And I have a draft communications plan that I put together. There's copies for people to look at tonight, but I will be bringing this forward to the board for consideration, because I think it's a tool that we can use to identify ways to improve communication at those different levels and work together throughout the town, throughout the different committees and parts of the levels of the organization. PEG Board reorganization is something that I think we still need to have continued work on. We have difficulty retaining qualified staff. I think we need to continue to look at the wages as a way to attract more qualified staff. And I particularly want to work with the PEG Board to develop a group of resident volunteers that can provide an additional cushion of resources for that organization.
I don't, to, I don't know if you want comments on these, or you just want to read them?
I, I don't think we need to take the time to do them tonight. These will be things that I'll be bringing forward under the goals workshop.
I just wanted, we do have qualified staff that are doing a great job on that station.
I agree.
And they're working hard, and things, things are working good. So I just don't want, I'm just concerned with saying that we can't retain qualified staff. I think the staff we have is doing very good.
I, I do agree, but I, I think it's, it's a fact that we've lost qualified people due to the wage issues. And I think that if we can look to improve the, the pay on this, that we'll be able to retain people beyond.
I've talked to many towns that still have volunteer pickles. And this, this town here, we just, we want to just, in order to keep people, we just want to keep raising money. I don't think that's the answer. As board of selectmen, you know, I just think.
I think then that's a, that's a more in-depth conversation that we need to have in our goal workshop to try to define, you know, the reorganization again of that department. The hiring of the new IT services consultant, that process is underway. I'm receiving multiple proposals, and I'm working with a team of department heads to be reviewing those, and we're bringing a proposed vendor forward for the board's approval. And this is going to be key, is developing the in-house process for staff to update the town website moving forward. And we've talked about this particular issue several times tonight, and that I think is going to be a challenge. We're, I'm nervous for our website to stay effective, we have to make sure that the staff have the time and the ability to do those necessary updates. So I think that's something to grow, and we need to be mindful of and work together on moving forward with different boards and committees.
I think that's going to be a challenge, because, I mean, I do have access to the boards that I have, and it's not real, real user friendly. You know, I mean, I know it says you can do everything, but it's not like just fill in the blanks and send things. I know you're saying, people are going to be able to update their home pages. It's not an easy task, and I know the work that Karen's doing.
Right.
And the town, the past town board did a lot of work on it, I believe, too.
Correct. And it's, you know, for, for most of the items that these, the routine posting of minutes or agendas, you know, that, that's something that's fairly easy to do. For a change out of reports or documents, we have some ongoing training that's occurring for staff right now. Matter of fact, Karen Prey is doing the staff session tomorrow morning on that. So, you know, it will require training, it will require ongoing support of staff, I'm sure, moving forward when we get the new IT vendor in place. But Karen has been very generous with her time for the town over the past few years, and, you know, it's, I think it's something that we need to make sure that we have the staff capacity to continue to do it ourselves. If not, that will be something that we have to reevaluate within the IT vendor contract.
So I think, very good, the original, that I'll make a summary presented in the next meeting. And thank you, I mean, I think it was a well meeting, and we learned a lot, hopefully we'll go forward and learn some more.
Thank you, I'll be back next week.
All right. Should you have a little mic?
Yeah, I will. We'll not, some changes.
Yeah. Thank you, everybody, for coming, appreciate it.
Thank you.
You can have it.
It's a workshop.
It's a public meeting.
Still making the motion to adjourn.
One second.
I'll, I'll.
Thank you. 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 Thank you.